All right, we are going to get started with our work session this evening. We have three things to accomplish this evening. One, we are going to be having our board evaluation. We also are going to hear from our superintendent in regards to his thoughts around the guardrails that we presented to him, and we also will have a discussion on superintendent evaluation. This part of the board evaluation is going to be a little bit different. There is going to be a moment where most people probably will not hear us for a little bit. The way that I'd like us to approach this evaluation is working with a partner. I'd like you to go through and actually look at the categories that we have, which is vision and goals, values and guardrails, monitoring and accountability, communication and collaboration, unity and trust, and continuous improvement. What you'll do with your partner is have a conversation about where we can be in the next three months. Normally, we score very high on the vision and goals. It's the other ones after that that are a little bit kind of were not really there yet. So I'd like you to have a conversation with your partner about where we could be. I'd also like you to have a conversation with your partner about what the board needs to do to get us there, and I also would like you to talk about what you individually can do to get us there. I'll give you about, I don't know how long this will take for everyone, but maybe we take about 20, 30 minutes if that's needed. If we get done sooner, that's fine. Then we'll come back to the table, and I'd just like to have one person in that partner group report out and share what it is you and your partner discussed and where you think that we could be. This will be our guiding point for us when we do this again in the next three months, just to see if we were able to do what needed to be done to get us where we need to be. Are there any questions about this process that we're going to use for our about board evaluation conversation?
Yes, you mentioned you want us to identify the future state. Do you also want us identifying current state as well as future desired state?
Well, for our current state, based off of the feedback that I received, sorry, I did ask for feedback a while back ago, what I really noticed is that everyone felt that we mastered the vision and goals. The rest of them were, excuse me, about a zero. It felt like we needed to improve in all of those areas. So I think that's where we're at right now. I think what we need to do is say, where can we be in these other areas in the next three months? Any other questions? Okay, so I would like if you all could just partner up, like Kim and Rob, if you could work together, Kelly and Kaylin, if you could work together, and I will talk to Tom about where I think we're at, and then we can report back out. Okay? And you probably want to put yourselves on mute. All right, let's get started with our board evaluation. What I'd like to do first is if I can just go through each section and with your partner groups, if you can just tell me where you all thought that we could be. And then if we're too far off from each other, maybe have a conversation about that. Otherwise, then we go into talking about what the board needs to do and what we individually can do. So starting with, I think, vision and goals. We're, I think 35 is where we are, and I'm seeing head nods, so I won't go through that piece. Vision and guardrails. Where did, Rob and Kim, where did you have us? Where did you think we could be for that one?
We felt we could be at a five in the next three months, based on our current work with guardrails and interim guardrails.
Kelly and Kaylin, where did you think we could be at by then?
We thought we could be at a five.
Okay. All right, one for one. Let's go to the next one, monitoring and accountability.
We were at a zero on this, just because of the superintendent's evaluation. We've already agreed that we'd be using management limitations on that, so. And the time use piece, we need to start scheduling as well, so.
Okay. So you guys think that we'll zero and then we'll go from there after that? And Kelly and Kaylin?
So we put ourselves at a 20. I'm trying to think what we're, because a lot of the stuff that we felt that we're, we could get to like monitoring reports. Well, some of the stuff we're already doing too, but just because as this tool works, if you don't get them all, you don't automatically progress to the next. So we felt like there are some things we're just doing, and so maybe just a few tweaks that we might be able to get to 20.
Okay. We will come back to that one. Our communication and collaboration, where did you think we could get to?
For us, we put it at a five.
And we put it at a one because realistically, the community engagement piece, having another session to engage the community between now and the next three months. We were concerned about, and I know that we do have on our timeline those dates scheduled out. I don't know that the next one is happening in the next three months, so that's why we chose a one.
Okay. All right, unity and trust.
We put ourselves at a three.
So we did, we said we were at a one right now, and we thought in three months we could get to three.
Okay. All right, and then the last one, continuous improvement.
We felt like we could get to a three.
We were, yet again, more pessimistic. We thought we could get to a one in three months. It's a trend.
No, that's fine. Let's just have a-
Perhaps realistic, not pessimistic.
Would, just a question, I did have us being at a one as well to be able to get there. Could we live in the space of saying that we could be at a one? That'd be okay? All right. Let's go back and take a look at monitoring and accountability if we could. Just want to talk about, I think, I'll say for myself that I had us at getting to a 20. I felt like there were pieces of this that we had, which made me think we could move this along. I know Rob and Kim, you all put us at a zero. Do we want to talk a little bit about where we think we could logically get to by that? I know that's kind of a huge difference between us all, so I want to see if we can get to a number that we could agree on.
Yeah, and the main reason why we didn't move beyond a zero is because the last item in column 10, and that's the superintendent and his evaluation is on performance regarding the goals and guardrails, interim goals and interim guardrails. We've not yet adopted guardrails and interim guardrails. We know that we won't be using interim goals, or excuse me, guardrails and interim guardrails to evaluate the superintendent this time around, so we don't feel that we can get there really until we approve the guardrails and interim guardrails for the next evaluation cycle.
Okay. Kim and Kaylin, what do you think about that? And Kim, can I just, I always want to make sure I understand what you're saying and repeating it. You both just feel just because we haven't adopted anything yet and we haven't gotten to that process, that we would just stay at a zero? We could potentially look at moving forward once we officially adopt the interim goals and guardrails and when we start evaluating our superintendent in that fashion?
Yeah, I would say we wouldn't be able to get to a 10 until the spring of next year, when we've adapted the 22, 23 evaluation cycle.
I would say too, because I agree with Kim on that. I also say the clause only on is also very important, and that the board limits itself to only evaluating what it agrees to evaluate the superintendent on.
Kelly and Kaylin, what do you think about that? Leaving it at zero or the case to be made for it to be at a 20? I think in hearing that, I can definitely see why you both put us still at a zero, and that does make sense.
Doesn't really bother me either way, but just the rest of that column seems kind of disconnected from that particular one. So if you're looking at the spirit of the column, that's why we put it up a little bit higher, because, I mean, we don't have that apparatus, so that's kind of irrelevant for us right now anyway. So that's why I think we went a little bit higher.
Okay. Oh, Kelly, I'm sorry, you're on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm comfortable with the will of the board if that is a more comfortable space and can see, you know, the rationale for putting us at a zero based on that one indicator. So I'm fine with that.
All right, and if it works for everyone, we'll put us at a zero then for that, for monitoring and accountability.
And one of the things that I was committed to doing is reaching out to our governance coach, to schedule training on the tracking of our public meetings when it comes to time use evaluation. I know that Aaron has been trained, but we will need to keep that legacy going and keep the practice up to date, so I will take ownership of that one to move us out of the red.
All right, wonderful. And the last one I just wanted to take a peek at would be the communication and collaboration. I know it's just, we've got one group at a one and one at a five.
I'll pull up our timeline now to see what dates we have, those community engagement sessions scheduled.
Okay.
Well, I tend to think if, as we continue to move forward, as we have our conversations around guardrails and we're talking about the implementation, that I felt like that would be something we would have completed within a three-month period of time, a two-way communication.
So do we feel that in this one, was it the community engagement piece, were you, Kim and Rob, that put us at that one?
That is correct.
Okay.
And just knowing the work and the way that we prioritized our guardrails, interim guardrails and policy diet, I just don't know that we will hold the session as intended.
We'd, and the other factor on this one was the not, we received the final version of materials to be voted on at least three calendar days before the meeting, which we were out of alignment tonight. Nobody had a problem with it for obvious reasons, but technically, we're not consistent with that one, so that's why we couldn't get beyond zero.
Can we live in the space of a one, being there in the next three months?
Yeah, and looking at the timeline, we do have the community session scheduled between now and that three-month timeline, so I can commit to ensuring that during our committee meetings, we prioritize that as a part of our work.
Okay. All right, we have our number set. I will make sure to send out to you all where we have committed to be to in the next three months. The final two questions that I have for you all before we move on would be, what can we do as a board to make sure that we meet these marks for the next three months, and what can we do individually?
Yeah, I think I've stayed in mind along the way, but committing to that time use evaluation as well as the community engagement piece, and the committee continues to focus on the guardrails and interim guardrail implementation and adoption.
Anyone else?
No, I would echo just as a member of the governance committee, that we continue to move forward with the timeline that we have set out and maintaining the process. And so thank you for your commitments, Kim, and for taking on some of those extra duties as well.
Anybody else's commitments on yourself or what we can do as a board?
Well, Duana, you and I just talked about tomorrow, agenda planning, talking about the time tracking, and that's going to require some follow-up, and so I'm willing to dig in and help with that process.
Perfect. Kaylin, anything from you before I speak? I want to make sure I give you the opportunity to speak as well.
Not really, no.
Okay. All right, I think what I will do is being a part of the conversations that we have with our community, I think that's important in keeping them informed about the direction in which we're moving. Also, any work that I can do with the governance committee that I'm a part of right now. And also, I think an accountability piece on the board behalf and making sure that the board is being accountable, also making sure that I hold some accountability for myself, and I would ask you all as a board that if you see something that I am not doing, to please check me on that as well. I think we need to be able to be okay withholding each other accountable. Okay, we will have our next conversation about our board evaluation in the next three months, and I know that we're all committed to doing the work to make sure that we get us to the place that we said we would, so I think you all are participating with, in that. This is probably the process that we'll continue to do. If there's something that you think we could do better in this process or do in a different way, please let me know. This is not the way it always has to be, but I wanted to try something different to really get us all involved in the conversation. All right, next we will move on to our guardrail interpretations. This, you will hear a lot from Dr. Ahart as we go through this, but we as a board gave our superintendent five guardrails on wanting his interpretation from this. He's just going to speak to us a little bit about his thinking behind each of the guardrails, and what I would propose that we do as a board is after we hear from Dr. Ahart, if there's things that you have, questions you have, or things you want to say after he's done, please do so. But I also think our next steps might also be to involve AJ in this process as well, as he's guiding us as a board. He'll be with us in the month of September, and then also Dr. Ahart working with AJ too as well, moving forward. So Dr. Ahart, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. The five guardrails, what I did was go through each of them and highlight terms that I thought required interpretation, like we've done with management limitations in the past. In cases where there's a term or a form of a term that repeats, I tried to keep that interpretation of that term parallel and tried to create interpretations that aligned with my understanding of what the board intended for each of the guardrails. So rather than just read them to you, I guess I would ask that you look through these and see if they make sense, see if there's anything that I can clarify, or if there's something perhaps that requires more specific interpretation that I didn't include in my list, et cetera.
So I just want to understand from a process standpoint, these definitions are your interpretation of each of the items in the guardrails themselves. If we are okay with your interpretation of these definitions, then you'll go back to and begin writing the interim guardrails as smart? Okay?
Yep. Yep. I thought creating interim guardrails prior to getting collective agreement on the interpretations was probably putting the cart before the horse, so.
Are we, and just for clarification purposes, we're not looking to discuss these terms today, but rather read through and then provide some feedback to Dr. Ahart?
Yeah, what I'd like you all to do is not get into a deep conversation about this tonight. I think Dr. Ahart has shared with us kind of his thinking and how he moved forward with this. Giving you time to read this, I would suggest that once you've read it and had a moment to kind of go through it, if you wanted to give your thoughts and suggestions to Dr. Ahart, I think that would be, that would be all right. But I know we're just receiving this, so I want to make sure you all have time to review this as well.
And I did email this this afternoon, so each of you should have an electronic copy of this as well, if it's easier to sort of, you know, send the comments within the document or whatever.
So what I would propose as next steps, if the board would want to move forward in this fashion, is to give you all an opportunity to look these over, give your thoughts and feedback back to Dr. Ahart. Also, AJ will be joining us in the month of September. I'm going to talk to him about this as well and have him come in and really facilitate the process for us through this, also having him work with Dr. Ahart as well as we get the interim guardrail set. And I'm looking to do all of this in September if we can. I know AJ will be with us this weekend, so I'll be able to have some time to talk to him about how we move forward, but that's the direction that I'm seeing us move in so that we can continue this process with the guardrails. If you have any thoughts, ideas, and suggestions of how we should move forward, please reach out to me, and we can have a conversation. But I would like to give you all the time to look at this, also the board members that aren't present with us this evening as well, but I do want to continue to move this process forward. Next steps would be getting some interim guardrails from our superintendent, along with having AJ be a part of this process to continue to facilitate and guide us through this.
Tom, could you speak to your process a little bit? Is this something that you've shared with your team? Have you collaborated with your team members? If so, who's been a part of that? And what's the overall feeling right now regarding proceeding with the guardrails as they're written?
I didn't, I didn't do a lot of collaboration with the team. I went through and tried to identify what I thought needed to be more specifically defined, you know, as an interpretation. I did have a conversation with my coach and with Matt Smith. I shared the guardrails with, you know, with the chief's group and asked for any feedback that they had, but we didn't really talk about the actual interpretation. And then when I had a draft, a partial draft of the interpretation, I shared it back with Matt and my coach, and then did one more little polish up this afternoon, both of them. But I didn't involve a broad group in the interpretation. We will have a broader group involved in the creation of the interim guardrails, however.
And then, Duana, I just want to be, circle back to, we got some feedback in between the last meeting and this meeting from Kaylin. When would be an appropriate time for that conversation to occur if he would like to revisit that interpretation or rewrite?
Thank you for bringing that up. I need to figure out if that is something that we would want to have a meeting for in the month of August of this month. So Ms. Martorano, if I can think about that and get back to you, but thank you for bringing that up, because I did forget about that. So I will look into that and see if that's a conversation that we need to have as a board further. Is there any other questions or comments before we move on to the superintendent evaluation?
So if I could jump us back to-
Yes.
-our board eval.
Yes.
One of the things that, obviously, we discussed it here in the work session, do we have this on a future agenda to approve our eval? Or will you discuss that probably in agenda planning at some point?
I'll discuss it in agenda planning, yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Next, I have for you all a sample of the superintendent evaluation. This is something that I have shared with Dr. Ahart as well, I believe. I've shared this with the board just for you all to look at. One of the things that we need to do, because we are going to be staying in the space right now of goals and management limitations, a part of the SOFG process as far as evaluating the superintendent, is weighting the two. So if we were living in the space of goals and guardrails, if you look at the bottom of this evaluation, it weights, you know, rather you want to look at the goals at 60%, guardrails at 40%, or the goals 50% and the guardrails 50. I wanted to have a conversation about how we are feeling about evaluating the superintendent, you know, with the goals and guardrails, and what percentage we would like to use. Do we want it to just be 50/50? Do we want it to be 60/40? How would you see us moving forward with that? It's really important that I'm able to give Dr. Ahart some answers about how we're moving forward so that him and I can sit down and get some dates together for the evaluation next year. So just want to hear from you all, what are you thinking and your thoughts as far as how we weight this?
My guts says to lead the goals a little more, weight the goals a little more heavily since that's the academic focus, but without knowing what the guardrails are, and even if we do have them, like, it's really hard to say at this moment, you know?
So would you want to, Kaylin, I know, well, what we're going to use right now is the management limitation, since we don't have the guardrails. Would you want then the goals to be weighted more than the management limitations? Because that's what we're going to be using for his evaluation right now.
Yeah, so just for clarification, this entire right side would be management limitations 1, 2.1 through 2.10, correct?
Well, we've got, yeah, this would be for, right now, currently, we live in the space of taking all of our management limitations, and that's how we are evaluating the superintendent. So it would definitely be all of our management limitations. Now, I do know that in guardrail world, it's the guardrail, and then there's interim guardrails. And so if we need to have another conversation of what it looks like with management limitations, we could also have that as well, but I know that I'm just trying to get a gauge of what we're thinking and feeling about, you know, being in the world of goals and management limitations, knowing that we're not realistically in the world of goals and guardrails. And so we'll be doing a piece of this, but we won't really be doing the guardrail piece because we won't be using that in our evaluation of the superintendent right now.
Back to your question, I suppose the first thing I'd need to know before I settled on a number would be, how are we defining compliance? Because a lot of the times when we get these, you know, the goal is 36, and we're at, you know, 19 or whatever, we mark that non-compliant. Is the question, are we being compliant with the goal? Are we being compliant in that we received it appropriately? So I'd want to get those kind of details hammered up before I gave a number. See, I've just been kind of unclear about that for quite a while now, about what we're marking not compliant, what is compliance, you know?
So my understanding is that compliance would be with-
So my understanding is that compliance would be with the goal and not necessarily that we received a report within a timely fashion, but rather have we made progress towards achieving that goal? And we have the, are, we have our interim goals and, and tie, you know, if you look at our, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of a monitoring report in my head. And I, I know that, you know, we have those progress measures at various data points or timelines that we could say, yes, we've met it or no, we have not. So that's how I would interpret compliance or non-compliance.
Right, and that's my point. It feels like we've made that transition at some point, but we never really talked about it, it just kind of started happening. So until we have a common understanding, I, I wouldn't be comfortable saying we got to put it 60% on the goals because I'm not quite sure what compliance means for that goal. You know what I mean?
And I guess I've all, I feel like the compliance conversation as a board has probably, has come up before when we're talking about what's compliant and not compliant. But I think that for me is where the superintendent comes in to make that, to tell the board that he feels like he's compliant because and, and gives us the proof of that. So I feel like from a whole standpoint, he normally lets us know if he's compliant or not compliant based off of where we're at and, and feeling like that we could meet that goal as well. Ms. Martorano, what do you think about other compliance?
Yeah, it, it comes down to strictly, are we meeting the percentages that we've set forth for our goals and our interim, interim goals? And the, the timeframe that's been agreed upon. So it's, it's 100% looking at student achievement and whether or not we've reached the, what's been set forth.
So I guess I should also ask this question too. I'm just putting it out there, how do we feel about living in this space of using this type of value with a tool considering we're talking about goals and management limitations? Knowing that this tool is really set up for being in a goals and guardrail space. Is there, you know, any other way that we should, should move forward with this? Are we feeling like using this tool would work? The only concern I have is that I know this is set up for the guardrail space and we are going to be using the management limitation space right now. And we know that we have lots of management limitations. So that's just some of my concerns with it, but I want to hear from you all about how we move forward because we do really need to be deciding this so we can give our superintendent direction.
Are the interim goals on this thing intended to be the progress measures that are on the? Okay.
Yes.
So then in your example, in goal one, that, in that hypothetical example, the goal is not met, two of the three interim goals are met. And then met or two thirds met is, is listed as two thirds met. Why is it listed as two thirds met?
So in the interim goals themselves, two out of three of those interim goals are either are, are on track to meet the target or meeting the target.
So then the, the goal itself is not counted, then it's just the interim goals that we're counting? In that, in that example?
Well, because we're not at the end life of the goal. So when we would get to the end of the goal itself, we would be looking at all of them. But in this case, in 21, 22 evaluation, we will only have, we won't have the end life of the goal. Nor will we have the end year of that particular goal, so.
And so then how does the math add up then? Okay, so then, so, so then for, as we look at this, then assume that there's actually nothing in those boxes next to goal one or goal two or goal three. So then you've got goal one is two thirds met, goal two is two thirds met, goal three is, did not meet. Although I would tell you that I can't tell why goal three is did not meet and goal two, goal one is two thirds met because goal three is above on one, basically meeting on the other, the second one, and then below on the third, which is the same thing as the goal one. But setting that aside, because I know that's just the example. How do you, I assume that this adds up to some sort of a score. How do you get to that score?
So the way that I understand this is like
Down at the bottom, right in corner, you've got, you know, how many zero through four, not satisfactory, five through six. So in this particular example, there are six total items that are being evaluated, three goals, three guardrails. So six total items, in this case, the, there are four that are, are met out of those six. And so that would put it into the not satisfactory. Well, in this example, there, it could be one or the other. It's showing you two different items. So this is very much a sample evaluation style. We would need to make it our own. But if we had three goals and 10 management limitations to evaluate, we would need to come up with a, a matrix for what is, what is satisfactory or not satisfactory, or whatever nomenclature we decide to use to determine where the superintendent is at in the evaluation.
So I guess, because the, the idea of this, the idea of this is to more closely automate this process so we don't end up just putting our fingers in the air and deciding how do we feel at this point in time? So then I guess my, my next question then would be, if you're going to say this is the scale and if, you know, if four out of six means this and three out of six means this, I think that it would probably be logical then to tie some things directly to that. So if it's five out of six, it's a 3% raise and, you know, this, that or the other thing. If it's, you know, and I think it's, because I, I think at the end of the day, you're adding some more specificity, but you're getting it to about the 10 yard line. And then the last 10 yards, it could, it, it really still comes down to, well, listen, it's four out of six, but it wasn't really a strong four out of six, so I'm kind of down here. Or I got this other thing that I'm not happy about that I'm not going to say. And so it, I, I, I feel like we're, and I see where you're trying to go. You're trying to, to, to really automate this thing a lot more. I think to, to make it fully as such, and honestly, you got to take a lot of the judgment out of it then.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, when you say automate, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with, I don't think that this is going to be a plug and play because we're going to be living in the space of management limitations and management limitations are not smart. We're not going to have a clear indicator of whether or not we are, have met or are compliant or not met a management limitation because we haven't said, you know, by this date and this time, we will be at this percentage. So I don't, I don't know that we will, we will be in that space of automation as I'm understanding your interpretation to be.
Well, you are though, because you're saying, you know, there's 10 management limits, actually there's 11, 2.0 through two, 2.10. So there's 11 of these management limitations. Every, every time he gives us a, a report on them, I believe there's still a evaluation of that monitoring report. So it still says whether it's compliant, partially compliant or not compliant. So I, there's still a score that it's just not a smart goal score, but there's still a score to, to live on, on that side, on that side of the piece of paper.
So I think this is why I'm trying to make sense of, I, I think you, I know you get what I'm, where I'm trying to get to. I'm really trying to bring this process in because I think before, you know, of what I've observed are, are evaluations of the past. It's been kind of all over the place. So trying to bring us to a little bit tighter spot when we are having, when we're having these evaluations. I think, I'm, were you saying something, Kalen? Okay, okay. But I think the, the bigger thing is the management limitations. I think with the goals, you know, the interims, we've got those. But looking at how are we going to do this with the management limitations? Considering that there's so many sub-things underneath each management limitation as well.
Think another part of the conversation, and, and this is looking at that whole top part, right? When, when we've got almost met and met and, and what's a rounding error and all those sorts of things. Because, you know, I'm looking at guardrail two there on the right. And when it goes gold, it's 92.4% and it says almost met. But as far as being two thirds met, that's, that's as good as being a zero. So we'd really want to weigh that, weigh the consequences of being very close, but not quite, you know what I mean? I mean, I suppose looking at progress and things like that should matter too. And that's not really reflected in here necessarily because you can have two good reports and one bad one. And, well, that, you can have one very close one, one good and then one bad, and still that's, that's a no meet by the letter of the page, you know? And I'm, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that kind of mindset. Like I don't really like these absolutes and having absolutes does, does tend to streamline things and make it more simple, but sometimes you lose the nuance, I guess is my point.
Now, here, would it be, and, and I know I don't want to keep prolonging this because I, I want to be able to give our superintendent guidance on this moving forward. Is it possible at all to look at this from a management limitation perspective? What would this tool look like fitting in management limitations? And whether that matrix is defined further to have greater understanding? I mean, I think, you know, it's, it's definitely one of those things that becomes a clear cut. Either you met a goal or you didn't meet a goal. And I don't know if that becomes where some folks are like, oh, but he didn't meet a goal, but we're, we're making progress. I mean, those are all things that you kind of take into consideration anyway. So I, I don't know if that would help folks is to look at the tool through that framework.
I think that could help and I, and I think another thing that might help not putting more on, you know, on anyone. But I know right now we're just looking at a sample document, of course, that we would need to tweak for ourselves. Because I think that's, that's going to be important. This is something that's a guide. If we could take some time to get something together to show the board so that maybe we could see what this looks like, would that, would that help everyone a little bit more? I know, I, I, I think most of us are visual individuals, so we need to really see something. I think this is a good guide for us, but I know we're not in this space. So if you would allow me to have a conversation with AJ, get some guidance on this. See if we can get something more visual for you. Kim and Kelly, not to add more to the plate that I know is already overflowing. But if we could go through this as well and maybe this weekend when AJ comes, have a conversation with him about it as well so that we could see about getting something to the board for them to see.
I think that would be great and I would just lift up to board colleagues that if you have questions you want to ask of AJ, if you're there on Saturday, you know, please bring those. If you're not able to join us on Saturday and want to share with one of us, that we can lift those up with AJ as well when we have this conversation. Yeah, I think absent of two board members this evening, I would, rather than trying to interpret what I've hear, what I've heard tonight, absent those two board members, I would like to open it up to the entire, all board members for feedback and what you would like to see with a deadline associated with that, so that we can sit down and revamp. Because I'm filling in the, our real goals and our real interim goal, guardrail, sorry. Our real goals and our interim goals and our management limitations into this, I don't think is difficult. But I think there's more to the opinions that I've heard tonight than just filling in the sample data for the real data. So if we could get that feedback, I think it'll, it will streamline our approach in the next time we sit down and review this.
I think that that would be fine to open it up to the other board members as well. I just want to also state the urgency for this, for me, for our superintendent. We have gone a, a very long time with this and I know that we're trying to get things together and get it right. But I, I would love to move on this very quickly. So I would say if we're going to send something out to the board, you'll get that very soon. But I really want to put the pressure on us to get this done like this month. Because it's, it isn't fair to our superintendent to still be kind of waiting to see how we're going to do things. I know right now we have not been in a value to space with him and he's been very patient as we've been working through it. But I do want to put the pressure on the board and I know we're minus two people that we really need to get this done this month. So I know we're off this month, it's an opportune time to get this done. But I really want to make sure that we do that because I want to make sure we give him communication, ideally before we have our first board meeting in September. So this might require us coming together again as a board to have that conversation. But I do really want to make sure that we get this done and preferably this month.
Can we look at the 17th for a due date for feedback and recommendations?
We can. We can and maybe, and I know we'll talk about the 17th at agenda planning. And so maybe the 17th can be a time where we do that and then look at maybe when we could meet again in short order to, to get this all together. So I could, I would be fine with putting that 17th as a date.
For, I just have a quick procedural question. Is this something that we vote on as, or is this something just to make sure that we have agreement on moving forward?
For the evaluation?
Yes.
We normally don't vote on the evaluation, if I remember from times past. So this is just something that we agree upon as a board, that this is the evaluative tool that we're going to use for our superintendent. So we won't need to vote on this. That's all that I had for our work session this evening. Thank you. I will get things to you in very quick order. Thank you to Dr. Ahart for hanging and walking through the evaluation with us. We will be working on your evaluation as well. So we are done at 8:00 or 9:00 PM. Thank you all very much.